January 16th Planning Commission to order. And Stuart, you do a roll call.
Yes, sir. Chris Crowley.
Here.
Roger McKinley. Garfield Parker.
Here.
Vivian Diggs.
Here.
Charles Williams.
Here.
John Cost.
Here.
Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
Alan Garland.
Here.
Heidi Wilkins-Cory.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Okay, good enough, good enough. Let's do an invocation and pledge allegiance, please.
My father, I thank you for this day. I thank you for another opportunity to serve this community. I thank you for the Planning Commission members that are here tonight, those if those are absent. We also pray tonight, Lord, for the California fires and those victims of those fires. We pray that they will find some sort of restitution, some sort of peace in what they're going through. We pray we may never have to go through anything like that. We ask a special blessing tonight, Lord, for those that are not, that are, for our county government and our county agencies, give them wisdom and knowledge. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is election of officers for this term. Chairman, vice chairman. Floor is open.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Garfield Parker to be the chairman. Second?
Any questions?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Amen, thank you. Vice chairman.
You want to serve again?
Sure.
I'd like to nominate John Cost. I think he's done an excellent job.
Second?
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Stuart, any more business we can take care of other than that?
Yeah, if we could have a couple revisions to the agenda.
Okay.
I had, Mr. Tadlock had reminded me about the remote participation policy after I had done the agenda, so we want to consider if that's, if it's okay with the commission to put that after reviewing the Planning Commission bylaws.
Okay.
And then Chairman Parker came by the office and asked me to do some research on groundwater, so if we could add that down in the, I guess, discussion items, if that would be okay with
There was some suggested language circulated for purposes of any land use or zoning decision?
Yes, sir. The county attorney, I believe it was about last year, started asking the board of supervisor members to say the phrases regarding, and I can read it if I could borrow that one. But if you're making, if you're making a motion on procedural things, it doesn't matter. But if it's a public hearing and a land use or zoning decision, the person that makes the motion, and I'll, each meeting I'll have these on the desk, so you can grab them and keep a copy. This motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practices and in pursuant to the body's statutory authority. That basically explains what we're doing here, and the county attorney recommended the board supervisor do that. They do that pretty regularly. They, sometimes I forget, but hopefully we can remember to do that on any land use or zoning decisions because it's just a little extra insurance for us.
Okay.
And y'all have it in, but like I said, I'll bring hard copies every meeting, so we'll distribute it, so.
We should put these back so that you can reuse them.
Yeah, yeah, and if we could recycle them, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay. And, okay. And I did, I also did forget to invite the community. Anybody online today?
Mr. Haney is online.
Okay. Richard, good evening. Okay. So Stuart, we have here a review of Planning Commission bylaws.
Yes, sir. I didn't print those out. I did send them to you, I believe, by email. Basically, you know, the only thing that, in the past, we've only really discussed changing. I mean, if any member has a problem with the bylaws and wants to modify something, feel free, but just whether it's 7:00 PM on Thursday, Thursday still works for everybody. And it's just a formality. We got to re-adopt it every time.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody has any other problems with the bylaws, but.
The electronic communications proposed resolution, does that affect the bylaws? Do we need to adopt that first?
The what?
Electronic communications resolution.
Well, it's a separate standalone, basically. I don't think we need, I don't think the board incorporated it in the bylaws.
Okay.
It's just a standalone, and we'll have to do that every year as well. Renew that every year.
Chairman, I move the renewal of the bylaws for the 2025, please.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, what's next, Stuart?
Yeah, the remote participation policy is basically boilerplate language. Like I said, Mr. Cost asked me at the beginning of the meeting, the board supervisor's been using this for, ever since COVID, and I think we may, I think we adopted it during COVID and then maybe we didn't adopt it, I don't know. But if, it's, it's optional. If the commission wants to go down here and let, allow commission members, you know, there are criteria that basically, you got to be, well, you can read it, a medical condition and then if the principal resident more than 60 miles from the meeting, of course, that's not the case here. Personal matter, you have to actually explain what the personal personnel, personal matter is. And then finally, when we have somebody that wants to be remote, we have to, before, at the beginning of the meeting, say that we're going to allow remote participation anytime it happens. And then we have to have a quorum before that extra person's here, which is kind of, I don't like that. I mean, the remote was hopefully to get a quorum, but it sounds like you have to have a quorum physical before you can have an additional member. And then the voice has to be transmitted and heard by everybody, and that's not a problem here. But it's, it's state code and just trying to follow that, and if you all have, would like to do this, then we can adopt it and I'll file it away and we'll be good until we need somebody, and then we'll have to, have to vote before the meeting and say, can we have this extra person? But anyway.
Your pleasure.
By doing that, by voting on it, is that going to make it so that sometimes we may not be able to have a quorum or to have enough people because of what we did?
No, I mean, I'm hoping everybody's going to make all the effort they can to come to the meetings. It basically, I think it helps protect us all in case someone is sick and they can't make it, but they still want to be involved.
Right.
And the quorum is a quorum, and whether the person participates or not, we will either be able to operate or we can't, you know, we can't make it.
But you have to have a physical quorum. The person that's online doesn't count, is that?
That's correct.
Right, that's correct. The thing is, is you got to have a quorum to take action, right? So if you don't have a quorum, you can't take any actions, and one of the actions would be to vote to allow the person to attend. So if you didn't have a quorum, you couldn't vote to allow the people to attend. That's the way I'm interpreting it.
What is that quorum number now?
I'm sorry.
I need to clarify that with Luttrell or the county administrator. I think it's the number of existing members we have, so it doesn't count the empty slot we have. So that would be five, five people.
Under the bylaws, it's six.
Oh, okay.
And. That's right. Because we have a vacancy.
That's what I don't know about the vacancy.
Six members under the bylaws. For a quorum.
Majority of members, but, okay. Impertinent question.
My, I have the same reservation that Charles has, and that's, why should we make it any more difficult? We have to have a quorum to allow somebody else who's a member of the board to participate
Well.
That sounds, sounds kind of silly to me.
The other thing, well, I mean, I, this is the way that I was handed this document, so I assume that's the way they've been operating before. And I don't know whether Mr. Haney, not being a member, whether, whether this was required for him to remote participate, so, you know.
Well, we all know he's going to participate regardless, so.
Whatever y'all like to do, you know, it's an option.
We did this last year, right?
I believe we did.
I think I was the only one that took advantage of it, and I appreciated it.
Well, COVID made it a necessity.
I don't think we voted before you, before that, but anyway, yeah, we'll remember this time.
Okay. So how do you want to proceed?
I move adoption of the resident adopted.
Someone made the motion to adopt it. Is there a second? There's a second?
I'm sorry, who was that? Garland? Okay, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
No.
One no.
Okay.
All right.
And Patrick, I apologize, you're right, it is six, not a majority.
No, I, I can envision these situations in the summer when people are out of town or at the beach or in a softball game. We have trouble getting forms.
Yeah, like in sickness and all that.
But we didn't have a problem this past year at all, if I recall.
We came close a couple times, right?
If you remember, Mr. King was.
Well, since we'll be hearing more public hearings, it's going to be, it's going to be, we're going to need to have quorums.
Okay.
So to keep everything moving.
Okay. All right.
But I mean, I think everybody's doing a good job.
Okay, next, Stuart?
Approval of the agenda.
Okay.
Revised agenda, I'm sorry.
Move approval of the agenda as revised.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody pose? All right. Stuart?
Approval of the December 19, 2024 minutes.
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the commission have a comment? Been some exciting cold days in Northumberland. Anything? Do any of the commissioners have a comment on where we are? Okay. Stuart, do you have anything?
Just that we're going to be gearing up for the capital improvement plan here at the next month, and the annual report, I've been working on it, but it's not ready, so we'll have the annual report in February.
Okay. And we did not get any extra money from anywhere going into this CIP?
I'm not privy to the financial part of it. That's more of a Drew and Luttrell thing.
Okay, all right. Okay. Are there any citizens' comments?
Not today.
Not today. Any citizens' comments that does not affect, that does not affect the public hearings that we're having tonight? All right? Okay. Stuart?
Yes, sir. Let me get the sign up sheet, and we can begin with the public hearing. All right. So I'm sure you all got the email, but just for the record, we had three public hearings scheduled, but the two Reedville rezonings, the applicant requested to withdraw the requests, so we only going to have one public hearing tonight, and that is a request by Westmoreland Players Incorporated owner to modify a condition, limiting the size of a proposed sign to a conditional use permit on property zoned A1 agriculture. The property is shown as tax map parcel 14, double circle 1, 15A, is located at 16217 Richmond Road.
Okay. All right. And we have someone speaking to it?
You want to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Opening the public hearing, I thought we were open, okay, all right. Thank you. Okay.
I'm William Arkel, Bill Armstrong. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Governors of Theater. I'm a member, and we have a sign in front of our facility that has been there a very long time. Anybody going up and down 360 has seen this. It's time of purchase, it was probably state in the art, but now it's woefully inadequate to really anything that people are putting up. We wish to replace it with a compliant sign similar to that used by the rescue squad, church, boys' club, so on. The sign serves a vital purpose for us, and that allows us to inform the community of our schedules, our shows. We post notices of auditions. We are totally volunteer organization, open to the entire population of the county. We have people that come and they work physically, they run shows, they act in shows, they serve cookies at shows, they help you find your seat. All these are volunteers. The sign helps us keep our volunteer base as well as our patron base informed of what we're doing. The sign that we're asking to replace again is obsolete. The new sign would be in the same location. It would face up and down the highway. It does not face off the highway or either direction, so it's just, it's just a two-sided sign, doesn't have to reflect across the highway. The closest occupied residence is approximately 500 feet away, and it is mostly obscured in the winter by evergreen trees, and during the summer, I believe it is thoroughly obscured from that residence. That, for, again, I did a quick survey, that's probably the biggest offset from a residence of any, just any of these sides we see along the highway. Beyond that, we just think it is necessary for us and for our organization to upgrade provided a professional and appropriate appearance for our facility. Appreciate your approval.
Okay. Just a minute. Commissioners, go ahead.
The sign, I'm sorry to interrupt, specific fine details, but will the volume of light emit, being emitted from it change in a dramatic way?
I don't, well, the, the old sign is a red dot sign.
Right.
And red dots don't emit a tremendous amount of light, but it is, will not be any brighter than its adjacent signs up the highway. It'll, it'll be consistent with basically what's common practice now.
What's the size difference between what you currently have and what you're looking at getting?
The main difference is ours is a bit taller than what we will be getting. It will, of course, allow us to put more lines of script because it's electronic as opposed to digital, but essentially, if you, again, I don't have the exact dimensions, but it's within the limits of the county for that type of sign. Yes, sir?
I've got to ask, since you'll have this new sign and so many opportunities for creative writing, have you considered renaming yourself the Northumberland Players?
Well, we generally call ourselves the Players. The big problem is in our corporate charter, and we would have to make changes to our corporate charter to take Westmoreland out, but yes, we, we wanted to do that for a long time, but it, I'm not the paperwork lawyer.
The guilt is ongoing in ways on you.
Excuse me?
The guilt is ongoing in ways on you. Not sufficient, pardon.
Well, sir, yes.
Mr. O'Brien, you are a practicing attorney, perhaps you could help them with their corporate charter in order to get you away?
Simple form that can be done very cheaply. It is simply an amendment to the corporate charter, the form for which is on the website of the Secretary of State.
I'll bring that up to the board.
Mr. Armstrong, have you talked to your neighbors? I did have a call from one who was very opposed to any increase in the signage.
Yes, sir.
And you know who I'm talking about?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. I didn't know if you tried to work with him any at all to try to come up with an accommodation that would, because I tried to bring up things like maybe having the sign maybe not be on all night long or something like that. That didn't seem to, I don't know. I was hopeful of something that could be worked out.
If it's the person I think you're referring to.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, he's never going to be happy.
Well, that's the beauty of the digital signs. You can time it out at, say, 10 o'clock at night.
It can be timed out, it can be dimmed, it can be brightened. There's a lot of possibilities. You drive through 60 at 11 o'clock at night, there isn't anybody there. I don't, again, I'm not a person that's putting the sign in, but that would certainly be, something could be looked at.
Yeah, any accommodation there, I think, would probably be appreciated by me, if any, absolutely.
Sure.
On the other hand, whatever additional lighting on that piece of road is probably, from the standpoint of public safety, a good thing.
The church is right down the road from me, right?
Yep.
Yes.
And that's, they have an electronic sign.
Yeah.
Right.
It's on 24 hours.
Yeah, it is on 24 hours, you're right.
I, I don't know if you wish to see it, but you have the photographs of where it sits.
We saw the plan that you submitted.
All right. Any more questions? Philip, did you have anything to add to that?
I can answer Mr. Garland's question. The existing sign is 28 square feet, and they're allowed to illuminate 50%. The zoning ordinance allows for this zoning district of agriculture to allow up to 64 square feet, which would allow for 32 square feet to be illuminated.
Okay.
That's my understanding as well.
60, 64 square feet?
Yep.
I thought it was 50, but it's 64, huh?
It's 64.
So it's an electronic sign that, kind of like the rescue squad sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same height, same pole, I'm sure, everything is going right there together.
Very standard now.
So just an eight by eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this will be in the form of a recommendation or a zoning variance, I guess. But it's really not statutory.
I guess it was a variance at the time. At the time, it was limited to 32 square.
Yeah, they're current.
There was conditional use, right, that limited to 32 square feet.
So if I understand it right, Mr. Marsden, please correct me. We're modifying a condition that was put on by the board supervisors back in 1996 when they originally approved the sign. So we're basically just looking at that one condition and modifying that one condition. So it's not a variance, it's just modifying a conditional use permit, correct?
That's correct. Well, that 32 square feet, though, that was the sign limitation at that time, right? Was it, was it not?
Yes, that, that was a condition that was placed on it by the board at that time to allow for the assembly hall.
The question is, does it have to go back to the board?
Yeah, I mean, we got to recommend, we got to recommend to revise this condition to the board, and then the board will consider it, and they may put another condition on, maybe, you know, dim after 11:00 PM or so, I don't know what the board may add to it, but.
So in terms of a motion to pass this forward to the board of supervisors, we need to use our shiny new words, right?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move that we, the most, that use be permitted and advise the board, the board of supervisors accordingly.
Okay, okay, let's go back, read the stuff.
I was going to get to that.
Okay, all right.
And this motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good practices and pursuant to the Planning Commission's statutory authority.
Supports? Second? They made second. Any questions?
Should we leave it to the board of supervisors to?
We're just, we're just going to recommend to the.
Oh, I understand.
Right.
But I'm talking about the dimming part. I mean, would that really, Mr. Armstrong, do you think that would really be a major deterrent for you if the sign had to be dimmed at nighttime?
I guess if it's consistent with what other people are required to do with their signs.
Okay.
Because ours is not very close to a house or a hotel party.
I understand.
I virtually guarantee that the Baptist church is across the street, does not dim their sign.
I guarantee your.
I have a lot of private.
I don't think any signs are dimmed.
Yeah, I doubt it. I doubt it. Okay.
So it'd be hard to do that, so, okay.
Yep.
All right. So the recommendation is that we send this back to the board of supervisors with our approval?
Basically, that recommended modify the condition as requested.
Okay.
I mean, unless y'all have any things you want.
If you have.
I just want to read, just want to make sure nobody's online that needs to speak towards the public.
Is there anybody online that want to speak to this? Mr. Haney, any comments?
We bored him to death again.
All right. Okay, so we had a motion, it was second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stuart, was that done correctly?
Yes, sir. I'm just writing notes.
Okay. Okay, and I'm.
Close the public hearing.
Yeah, close the public hearing.
We're closing the public hearing? All right.
As I mentioned earlier, the other two public hearings were withdrawn. So next thing is discussion of Chapter 5 revisions. Philip and I both read Chapter 5, and we didn't see anything that really needed changing. I know Mr. Cost reviewed it and has suggestions as well. And I'm glad that, well, this is kind of boilerplate language that DEQ requires for water quality protection, and so I'm glad that we didn't want to take any sections out of it because I don't think we'd be meeting state criteria if we did. And with regards to the. And with regards to the individual... Adobe's updating. The suggestions that Mr. Cost gave were basically grammatical and not very substantive, as he mentioned in his letter. And I'm sure everybody else got that right. With regards to reordering the chapters, I understand his... Mr. Cost's rationale, and it makes perfect sense to me. But then that means that I might have to go in and renumber all the figures and all the tables and all the maps with the new map numbers. And I'd rather not do it. But I will do whatever the commission wants to do. I just thought I'd mention that it would... I mean, it's doable, I can do it. It just would take a little while, but we can discuss that. So I don't know when Adobe's going to update, so I can't show anything on the screen.
You can open up a little web browser.
Well, we want to open up Mr. Cost, or do we want to open the chapter?
It's going to be the same thing. Oh, that's our... Mine's just notes. You made it a PDF. You can open the Word version off your laptop.
Yeah, the Word version that I'm on my computer back in the office.
Oh.
I use PDFs because that way I can't make changes to them. Okay, we're up now, up and running, all right. So I don't know if we want to... I mean, it's really grammatical and consistency issues. I don't know if you all want to go through each one of these. I'll be glad to do it if that's what you all like to do. But I can... If you all want to look at them, that's fine.
There are a couple worth calling out that...
Okay.
Yeah. The first one...
Oh, sorry.
Water Quality Protection Plan, it makes a big deal on page one about this is referred to as the Water Quality Protection Plan, but those words are never used again. Now, is that the state requirement you were talking about?
Yeah, the whole chapter is the Water Quality Protection Plan.
Then disregard this for having a comment.
Okay.
Although you may refer to it as the Water Quality Plan for purposes of addressing the state requirement. Because I didn't get that.
Well, I mean, it's the state requirements, but it's also good practices when you have an economy that's based on fishing and water quality.
It's just, again, the words Water Quality Protection Plan are never used again in the document, so some clarification as to what that means, I think is useful.
Okay.
On page 5.3, the list of policies, there's five of them there, and two of them use the word "shall." Now, the problem with the word "shall" is, I'm sure Patrick would agree, is that it suggests that there is no option. So even the Board of Supervisors can't change that.
That's mandatory, yeah.
Most of the rest of the time, we're using the word "should," suggesting that there's some latitude and some discretion, because there may be times when you can't, for whatever reason. So in those two circumstances, it may be worth examining whether the word "shall" is appropriate or not.
If attracts a statutory requirement, we're probably safer saying "shall."
If that's the case, yes.
But I'm not... I'm sure it does, and I would defer to Stuart and your judgment on that point.
I wouldn't think that "should" would be better. What, do you have any thoughts in this, Mr. Marston?
I don't, actually.
Okay. I mean, the idea is that we would like this to happen, but as you mentioned, it's not necessarily going to happen in every case.
Let me read you the first one, C, just because you can... This is a perfect example of that. Development shall be done in such a way as to preserve farmlands, working waterfronts, forests, natural resources, historic features, and other environmentally sensitive areas. So put yourself in the shoes of the Board of Supervisors. Somebody's bringing in a major business that may affect a piece of farmland.
Is that statutory language?
It doesn't appear to be.
No, I do not believe it is.
Great, change it to "should."
And similarly, D, residential development shall be planned using conservation techniques where loss size reductions are permitted if the reductions are compensated by open space, riparian buffs, or other amenities. Again, I think "should" is perfectly accurate.
Should is fine with me.
Okay. Let's go back to your letter.
5.5 is... Yeah, we got a... There's an acronym issue on 5.6. That's just... It's the confiscable... 7... Page 5.9, the problem is, it starts with the water supply management strategy of the county has two goals, and then it lists them. And then what follows after that is about quality and quantity, but those two goals never mention quality or quantity directly. So a simple wording change would fix that, but... Because I was very unclear when I saw those two goals, so what's all the rest of this stuff all about?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. You think we should add water quality to the two goal... Somewhere in the two goals?
Number one, protect the quality of the superficial and arid wells, ensure the... And number two, ensure the long-term availability and quantity of potable water. I don't know why I need to open any here, but anyway, let's close it. There's a lot of references to various departments of government, health, DEQ's mentioned spelled out several times. I think we just need some consistency on the acronyms. And then 5.13, that is in reference to reservoirs. Remember that discussion, folks? So the question is, do we need a section on reservoirs here? Or have we kind of said, they ain't going to happen, so do we really need this?
I believe we should leave it as a placeholder, just as an option. It's kind of getting into my water quality discussion and a later part of the agenda, but the groundwater is still dropping.
Okay.
And...
To that point, I was discussing this with Chairman Parker. A reservoir might have some benefits from maintaining the water levels. And without installing all the plumbing to get from the reservoir to homes, that may have addressed some concerns about the water level without incurring the expenses of setting up a public water system. So I think it should be left there, and I think it's an issue we should come back to from time to time.
Fair enough.
That was the end of my list, I think. Oh, number 5.17, this is one where we have the boat launch facilities and stuff like that.
Yeah, I don't remember... We had... When we built the fishing pier, we had... We have a handicapped accessible porta potty there, but that's the only one that we have any restroom facilities at. Of course, this would be an increased cost, but it's not 12 months out of the year, you know, maybe eight, nine months out of the year. But I have not heard anything regarding doing... Putting porta potties in that. Or building, I mean, even more expensive, building a septic system and building for bathrooms.
Okay. This is a place where we use the word "should" instead of "shall," which is the right thing in this case.
Well, I mean, it's not out of the realm of possibility. I would think probably Shell Landing would probably be the number one contender, as it's the most busy and the most used one.
I'm fine with your suggestion.
You're okay with this? Okay.
There was one more, I think. Page 5.18 talks about septic systems. On-site sewage disposal for residential and limited commercialists have not properly installed. Yeah, 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 we get that. This in general is focused on new construction. A regional septic disposal system should be planned as a solution to the problems of individual counties in the Northern Neck not having adequate disposal systems.
Just as a note, the town of Whitestone worked with the Planning District Commission, and they got a quote-unquote sewer system in Whitestone, but it's not a sewer system. It's a mass drain field. It's basically a large septic system.
Well, it's a...
But, you know, that is an option, and like I said, Whitestone installed one, as opposed to building a sewage treatment plant. But, you know, again, I know everybody says we need sewer, but, you know, how are we going to pay for that? I don't know. And, you know, what's more important, Heesville or Burgess, you know?
Okay.
On that topic, there is a bill pending in the House of Delegates to require operators of short-term rental facilities that we've talked about before to report their actual income and traffic to the local, in our case, the...
Revenue.
Director of taxation.
Revenue.
Local taxation.
Revenue Commissioner.
Yeah. And that may change the subject that we've discussed in other contexts.
Right.
When and if it gets passed.
Mr. Marston, with regards to the short-term rentals, is it there an occupancy limit based on the number of bedrooms?
Now, enforcement is not easy for that, but it's based upon bedrooms and the size of your septic system.
So I think it's two persons per bedroom, and then two people that could sleep on the couch or living room, something like that. So the number of bedrooms times two plus another two for somebody crashing on the sleeper sofa.
Wow.
Or the futon, I guess.
Sounds fairly barbaric, but...
Well, there is a five-year septic pump-out rule from the Chesapeake Bay Act.
Okay.
Before the health... Well, the county was keeping a record of the septic pump-outs and periodically sending letters, but there was a bill two years ago where now the health department is in charge of the septic pump-out. And I'm not sure how far they've gotten along with it or any at all, to tell you the truth. But there is the five-year pump-out. The county also, as part of its enforcement of the Chesapeake Bay Act, requires if a house has not had electricity for six months or more... So if somebody moved out, the house is sold, the power was turned off, and then the electricity was off for six months, then the building and zoning office requires a proof of septic pump-out before you can buy a... Get an electrical permit to get the power... Get the house inspected to see if we can turn the power back on.
Okay.
So that's another enforcement. Of course, you know, probably a couple handfuls a year, that is, but...
Handfuls of what? Don't answer that. Pump-out. So in reference to that, if you... If we're still looking at bullet B, the fourth line down, the Bay Act requirement to inspect septic systems and to pump septic tanks every five years if necessary. So is the inspection and the pump if necessary, or is it a requirement?
There are two ways you can comply with the Bay Act, set five-year pump-out law. You can pay for a septic contractor to dig up your tank and inspect it and see if the solids are full, and if it doesn't need to be pumped, then you can just have an inspection certificate. Of course, it costs about the same to have it pumped as it does for them to go out there and lift the lid. So it's really... Doesn't make much sense to get it inspected unless you think you have issues. But that is an option for people. There's also a filter that can be installed that basically causes a backup in the house when the solids are. And if you install that filter, then you are exempt from the five-year pump-out because they're pretty sure you'll clean it if it backs up in your house.
You're all familiar.
Oh, yeah.
So there are multiple ways to get around... To try to get this, you know, it's... But it's also a sliding scale. You know, a person... A single person lives in a three-bedroom house with a three-bedroom septic system doesn't need to pump it out as often as a family of six in a three-bedroom.
But how do you know?
How do you know?
Census records.
You inspect it or you pump it out? And then once you do it the first time, you get an idea of where you're at. Because I mean, I don't know about you, but I asked the honey dipper, how bad was it? Was it full? Was it bad? He's like, oh, about halfway. And the main thing is, the solids, if they get... There's too many solids, and it goes out in your drain field and clogs the holes in your tubes that's your drain field.
Absolutely.
And so that's the whole thing to keep that from happening. But I know of farmhouses that have septic systems. They've said the life of septic systems are between 25 and 35 years old, but there's septic systems in farmhouses that are 75 years old.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it... Lack of use or whether it's sandy soil, but it's a guideline. It's just they chose a period that fit most of them.
Okay.
After the pump-out, Stuart, there's no place in Northumberland County for the disposal of the last pump-dead side of the...
That is true. That is true, and I believe most of them go to the Gloucester Sewer Treatment Plant to take it. When we were... When I was at the Planning District Commission, we were worried about this. There were several sewage lagoons in Richmond County that were almost overtopping the berms. The problem with Virginia is our evaporation rate is about equal to our precipitation rate. So it doesn't really go anywhere if you put it in a lagoon. And when the county started working on the Calio Sewer Treatment Plant, I asked Kenny, the county minister at the time, if he could ask his contractor how much it would cost to create a... You can't put solids from a septic tank into the treatment train because it will overwhelm it. It's too much solids. You have to dilute the solids, so you have to have a holding tank for it, and then slowly introduce it. And I asked Kenny, talked to Resource International, and they said, another million dollars. So anyway, but yes, it's... You have to travel to a sewage treatment plant that can take it.
What are they doing with the solids that they're pumping out, the septic system folks?
Well, that's what I was saying, they take it to Gloucester.
They're having to carry it all the way down?
Yeah, yeah.
And they can't use it at Sanitary District, that'd be rebuilt.
No, no, it's not just not set up. You got to, like I said, you have to have a holding tank and then slowly enter it. When I was at the PDC, I talked with Kilmarnock Sewer Treatment Plant, and they said, if you're a resident of the town of Kilmarnock, then they will accept septicage from it. And I'm like, how many people have... Still have their septic tanks down there?
Yeah.
Anyway, but...
It is an outrageous amount of money that they charge.
It is an outrageous amount of money that they charge you to have your solids taken down there.
I think the last time I did it was $250 or $300.
Yeah. It was $500 last time I did it.
Oh, really? Huh. Well, gas prices and...
That may be a deterrent on people wanting to have it pumped out, they know how much it's going to cost to get rid of it.
That's true. He said $500.
So, what does the county do in its long-term planning for, that to me sounds like a problem?
Especially if Gloucester says, you know what? We're not taking out of Gloucester County solids anymore.
So, how does the county plan for something that's almost inevitable?
That's our job.
Oh, I like the sound of that. It's our job.
That's what this is for.
Yeah, but the county projects that are coming up, the money, that's where, I think Richard would agree, it's all about money when it comes down to it. And that's unfortunate, because how are you going to progress? You've got to fix an old problem to get to the new stuff.
I agree with you. I mean, if you mandate that it be done,
Yeah.
you certainly got to provide for the consequences of that mandate.
Well, the pumpers and the haulers are all licensed by VDOT, VDOT, I'm sorry, Virginia Department of Health. And so, we trust that they do what they say they're supposed to do. And, you know, I don't know, there was a talk of a regional sewage treatment plant to take septicage, but it never went anywhere, so, you know, I don't have an answer for you.
Wow. Wow. And that was my, getting into my discussion about water levels. And can I go to that?
You want to talk about that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Just water levels. And, of course, everything that's happening on the West Coast is shocking. Now, if you have even a 40-year drought, and Virginia has had a drought year, so where do we go? What are we doing? How do you plan? Because all the urban areas are sucking up all the water, and they're getting rid of all their trash in the rural areas. So, what do you do? How do you plan for the water table drops? Because you've got more people, it's going to drop maybe a half-inch or a half-foot this year. And this particular county in the Northern Neck has the highest rate of cancer than most other parts of the state. So, is it in the water? How do you, how do you set up a system to filter out your water? Because every time you talk, you're talking about adding something new to the budget. And so, what does the, what do you do? When the county had a trash problem, it forced itself to do refuge, am I right? And we're all happy with the refuge center, so long as it's not trash in my backyard. We're all happy with it. And I'm thinking that when we put ourselves in positions like that, you know, it makes planning hard, because now things are not just, you don't hear people talk about thousands of dollars anymore. You hear them start talking about billions of dollars. And so, as a planning commission, what do we do? What do we suggest? I mean, Philip, I know you say, I mean, listen, I know you can walk across a couple of yards that know, you know they need to be drained, but...
It's just like, they've got a dry hydrant in Gourde's Mill Pond. The water level's being kept low there for some reason. It's not as high as it usually has been, and I don't understand why.
Well, with regards to the septic, you know, we don't have a landfill in the county either. I mean, but that doesn't seem to be a problem. I mean, yeah, it's going to cost a little bit more to take it down to Middle Peninsula, but I don't, I mean, I think we can rely on regional resources. But with regard to groundwater, I talked with Robert Pickett. He actually lives in Northumberland County. He is on this, he's the chairman of the Northern Neck Soil and Water Conservation District, and he's a former VDOT environmental person. He retired. And he's on the Eastern Virginia Groundwater Management Committee. He's our Northumberland County representative. And he told me that the groundwater is still dropping, and I told him about the reservoirs and how you all, well, how we had put the paragraph in that it's not financially feasible now, and talked a little bit about desalinization. And he said, well, I think we need to continue to think about other ways to get water. And one of the things he mentioned to me, which I'm not aware of, and I didn't have time to research it, but he says that the Virginia Department of Health is issuing new rainwater harvesting regulation. So, you know, that's another way of decentralized water. So, instead of building a giant reservoir, if everybody had a cistern in the roof, then they would have some water. Then, of course, you'd have to treat the water, and you have to maintain the system and flush it every once in a while, and things of that nature. But rainwater harvesting is another possibility as well. I'm not saying that it's economically feasible for most people, but it is an option.
Well, see, the problem I see is that we in Northumberland, in Northumberland County are at the end of the road. And I read an article last week for Caroline County is now going to pull water from the Rappahannock. Spotsylvania County is going to pull water from the Potomac. Your table is going to drop. Am I imagining correctly, or do I...
Not necessarily.
I don't know that a river affects an aquifer directly.
No, not necessarily. You said Caroline's, I know Caroline's pulling from the rap. What was the second?
In Spotsylvania.
Spotsylvania from the Potomac?
Yeah. And they're considering all options.
Yeah. I don't think the, I don't think they're going to take enough water out of the river that it's going to affect. I mean, there are regulations with regards to minimum flow to protect wildlife and fish and shellfish and all the rest of that stuff. But I don't think that, say, if we did lower the river, which I don't think it would, a half a foot, I don't think it would really affect the groundwater that much.
That actually might be good news, because if they're taking water out of the river, it means maybe they're taking less out of the aquifer, because we're dependent entirely on the aquifers.
Absolutely.
And when you said, mentioned that at the end of the road, that's a good thing. And I'll show you, if you don't mind.
Show me. Show me, tell me why it's a good thing.
This report is the 2020 Water Supply Plan that the state put together. All counties had to put forth water supply plans and submit it to the state. The state conglomerated all of them together into this plan. Of course, there's surface water section, and there's groundwater section anyway. And then they got model output, and so, we'll look at the models that they have here. Let's see here. So, if you're, I'm going to start at the top, which is the bottom here, but the Ponty Point Aquifer is the one closest to the surface here. And I can blow it up some more for you all. This is a scenario, I think it's very sensitive. This is a scenario for the Ponty Point Aquifer at 27, the year 2070 results, and this shows how far the water is down. It's greater than 25, 125 feet is red, and blue is above, is actually above, higher. So, the red, dark reds are the worst parts, and lo and behold, there's one over top of West Point. I wonder why that's there. So, I mean...
What does that scale showing us there? I can't read it from...
It's water feet, water level, feet below or above mean sea level.
So, now or 2070?
2070.
So, are we looking at the color of the topography there and matching the color of...
Yeah, the darker red is worse, is less water.
I don't see any darker red in that.
Well, it's, the darkest red is right here and right there.
Okay. Which is how many feet is that?
Looks like it's maybe 100 to 75, or 75 to 500, 75 to 50 feet down.
Okay. That's, that's deep.
Yeah.
That's thick. Okay.
So, then, the next one, which is not next to it, is down, ah, crap, this thing is very... Okay, so Ponty Point, yeah. So, this, all right, so the first one was with 2020 demand. When it says WSB 20, that's 2020 levels of demand. So, they projected out what the levels of demand are in 2040. So, then they use the 2040 levels of demand from each county and to see how much the problems we'd have at 2070, and it looks like it's a little bit darker. And if you compare the two, you know, there's not that dark in-between the two, Southern Maryland and West Point. And then you've got Hopewell with the other paper plant joining in the fun of low water levels.
That's right.
And, of course, this is the highest aquifer. So, then they did one final scenario, and I think I've mentioned this more than once here, about the Hampton Roads Sanitation District injecting treated wastewater into the ground. It's called SWIFT. So, that's with the increased wells. The injection wells are these green dots here, and that is to inject fresh water into the aquifer to keep it, the pores of the aquifer, the empty space is what's hold water. If you take out too much water, then those empty spaces collapse and compact, and that's when you lose your aquifer. So, by putting more water in it, it stays it off. So, if you can, if you can see, this is 2040 levels of use in a 2070 simulation with injection of water at these four points. So, it's not as bad as this one, the same timeframe, 2040, without injection. So, I guess it's basically trying to say that the injection is going to help us in the long run. So, that's Ponty Point. It's the same thing for the Aquaia. And so, this is 20, this is 2020 demand in 2070, and you see you have a low area around Middle Peninsula and actually up in Northumberland County, too. And then you go to the 2040 anticipated levels of withdrawal, and you get, it's even worse. And then you go back to the injection, and you see the lower part of the state is pretty good because of the injection, but we still have a few problems up here. And then finally, we go to the Potomac Aquifer, and this is 2020 levels at 2070, and it looks pretty bad here. And then even worse with 2040 levels here, and then not quite as bad with the injection scenario. Now, this is the Potomac, so we'll go, we'll just go in order. So, these critical cells, these are areas where they DQ regulations is 80% of the reservoir, they do not want you to deplete more than 80% of the reservoir, because they deem after 80%, it's when those compaction occurs. So, the critical cells in the 2020 water supply plot demand in 2030 are red, the ones that are critical in 2040 are green, the ones that are critical in yellow are 2050, orange is 2060, and blue is 2070. So, if you look at the 2020 water supply plan, demand, the fall line is a problem, you know? Like I said, where all the layers pinch out.
Right.
So, you know, Caroline's near up here, and then so, we go to, this is with the 2040 demand. So, then you see it's creeping eastward. It's getting wider and creeping eastward. Get that out of there. Between the two, 2020 and 2040 demand. And then, if you look with the SWIFT injection of these wells right here, it stays it off. There's still problems, but if you see red here is mostly 2030, it takes it to blue, which is 2070, but it's still kind of just saving off the inevitable. Same thing in the other aquifers. The Aquaia, it gets critical there in 2020, and it's all west of us in the fall line where the aquifers are thin, and it gets a little bit worse, and it's got the different colors that are marching east. And then, of course, with the injection, it stays it off, but there's still critical cell. But if you notice in all these maps, and this is 2070, none of them are anywhere near Northumberland County. And I'm not saying we're not going to have problems. I mean, it's coming to a county near you. But, and this is the Ponty Point with the 2020 demand and the 2040 demand, and you get some problems around West Point there. And then with the injection, it's a little bit better, but around West Point, it doesn't seem to be doing much.
Tell me where they're getting the water for this injection. Where's that coming from?
Wastewater.
From sewage treatment plant.
Really? That's got to be contaminated in some kind of way.
It's drinkable.
Why would you do that?
It's drinkable.
Drinkable.
Drinkable water. It meets drinking, it meets drinking water standards.
I'm not going to do it, but...
But if you're an astronaut, you'd be drinking your own waste.
So, they're doing that down on Hampton Roads.
But the engineer wouldn't drink it.
They're going to inject further up, just because the aquifer is not as up there.
Richard's back.
Okay, Richard's back. Okay, Richard, you have something to add?
Yeah. The engineer that designed the plant, Reedville, wouldn't drink it after he said it was drinkable.
Yeah, the Bayer chemical roundup guy wouldn't drink a glass of Roundup either. Although, he said it could.
I've also seen other sewer plants, and it's the same thing. The engineer claims that that water is drinkable, but they will not drink it. So, there is still something wrong. Whether it's just the thought of where it come from, or there is still contamination.
Well, all I know is the DQ has permitted this, and it seems like they are on board with this. Mr. Crowley asked, why is it only being done in the lower coastal plain? And the only answer I have to that is HRSD is a huge organization. I mean, it's all Virginia Beach, Suffolk, all those. And so, they have economies of scale, because they've got a huge budget, so they can do some of these things. And I don't know if that's something that other sewage treatment plants can take on, but, you know, it's, you know, as always, it has to do with money. But HRSD, if you recall last meeting, I mentioned that it actually helps the bay because the nitrogen and phosphorus, small amounts in the wastewater treatment plant, would be normally discharged into the James River. And so, that would cause algal blooms and things of that nature. And by taking those nutrients out and putting them in the ground, it actually is easier to meet their nutrient reduction goals. So, but, and the other thing is, the sediments down in the aquifer do cleanse. I mean, they, there is some cleanse. Of course, they also leach chemicals as well, too. But when it's in the ground, it does have some cleansing properties as well. I'm not advocating for drinking wastewater. I would not.
By 2070, won't, must everybody in this room be dead?
Of course.
So, we're not going to worry about that?
Because we drank wastewater.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
In light of all this discussion, and you talked about Mr. Pickett saying that rainwater harvesting was something they were looking at, is that something we should be including in our, in our water section of our capital, I mean, comprehensive plan?
I think perhaps, but I would need to do some research, and by the next meeting, I can do that and look at...
I mean, you talked about reservoirs and desalinization. I just think, why not throw that?
I mean, if the Health Department allows it, you know, as an... I mean, if the health department allows it, you know, that's, that's definitely an option.
That ought to go next to reservoirs, because you're going to need a reservoir if you're going to start collecting water. It's got to go somewhere.
Well, aren't they talking about it more on a personal level, like they do in third world, like Mexico and Alaska, where each individual home has their own cisterns?
Yeah, I, I, where I lived up in the Shenandoah Valley, uh, there was a, a community called, near Craigsville, that basically the bedrock is very close to the, to the surface. There's very small, small amount of topsoil. And so you go down twenty feet and you hit rock. And so they, I think they were given an exception by the health department, but everybody in that community has cisterns in their roof or next to their house. And, um, so it, it, it can be done, but, you know, there, e- even if you collect it off the roof, birds poop on the roof, and leaves fall on the roof, and so there's going to be organic matter in there. You're going to need to treat that water as well. But I assume that's what the health department regulations are going to talk about. But I, I'll research the health department regulations, and, and we can talk next meeting.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
Will the chair entertain the motion to adjourn?
Well, let, let's hear a board of supervisors' report first, from Stuart.
Yes, sir. Um, they, uh, the board supervisors passed, uh, Mr. Cottles', uh, request for a conditional use permit for the furniture, um, repair shop in, in Lotsburg. They also passed the, um, public hearing on, uh, using rifles of caliber greater than point two-three, uh, if you're in an elevated stand above eight feet, uh, provided that you do not load the rifle until you're on the stand. And then, uh, they made an exception that if you are on the stand and you shoot deer, and if you need to dispatch it, uh, you can climb off the stand and, and take your rifle and, and shoot them on the ground to, to, uh, put them out of misery. And there was, uh, one lady that asked about, uh, she didn't feel it was safe, and that we're flat, and we shouldn't have high-caliber rifles, but, uh, a couple of, uh, supervisors pointed out that you can target practice with a thirty-oh-six all day long legally in this county. And when it's not the hunting season, you can shoot groundhogs and coyotes with high-caliber rifle, too. And that there has not been any incidents that they knew of, of problems with that. So anyway, you're allowed to shoot from, you're allowed to shoot, uh, have a larger caliber rifle than point two-three on an elevated stand when you, uh, hunt, deer hunt.
And I believe they addressed larger caliber pistols as well. About anything, something above, uh, twenty-three caliber for pistols and long guns.
And I think they added, didn't they, added that rifles cannot be used for turkey hunting? Yeah, I think, I think they added that at the end, too.
Wow.
Blow up a turkey.
Dig out that lead shot.
Okay, that hits, dude.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have any public comments? For anybody online?
Another issue I need here.
Okay.
Number two. The CIP subcommittee.
Yeah, I knew there was something...
Yeah, CIP committee. I don't think the projects have gotten any lesser.
I have not looked at them. Uh, I, I told Drew that, uh, when we got the committee forum, he could, uh, send it my way, and I would forward that, so I haven't even had a glance at them yet.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll volunteer to be part of that again if you want.
Okay. Anyone else like to serve? I want to serve on it.
Yeah, it's, it's the chairman and two, two planning commission members. The chairman's automatically has a seat.
Anybody else?
Well, I, I will do it. I, I will have to do part of it by Zoom. I'll be out of, out of the state in the end of February. So if that's a problem for the commit, I mean, I don't mind serving on the committee, but for two weeks of February, I'll be out of, out of the state.
Because I'm thinking that it's going to get heated. You, you, you need to be there to heat it.
Why, she's going to be out of state.
Yeah, you're going to be out of state.
Well, I mean, like I said, if you can take me, you know...
Well, norm, normally we meet in the sheriff's office meeting room, and they have Zoom, so I think we should...
I'm willing to do that.
Be able to accommodate that.
We'll go with that? That all right with everybody?
Yeah.
I, I participated in this.
I'll defer to another volunteer. I mean, it's very interesting work, um, and I don't mind serving, but I don't want to be a detriment to the committee.
No, I, you're not going to be a detriment. Okay, that's fine. Um, fun times at the sheriff's office, so...
Before we move on past the, the comprehensive plan, as you know, I've raised on a couple of occasions the structure and some broader details. Stuart's a very busy guy, I get that. I've also volunteered to help do that restructuring, and have quite a lot of experience in doing that sort of stuff. Uh, I personally am of the opinion, and we've raised several new issues at this meeting that we hadn't considered before. So we, I don't think rushing through this is going to get us a, a quality output. Uh, frankly, I think we need to go back and revisit the whole thing, not in the level of detail we have, but in making sure that this is something that people will take notice of and find of value. Uh, right now, I don't think that this document meets that standard.
Stuart, are we on a time crunch for that?
Uh, the only thing that I, I know of is that, uh, addressing solar. It seems that, uh, anytime a, a company that wants to put solar in the county says, well, uh, we don't, we don't see solar in your comprehensive plan, I have to tell them that, because it's not in there yet. But that's, that's the only thing that I know of. I don't know if Mr. Haney has any thoughts on this, uh, on the timeline. I mean, we've been working on it for two years. Of course, COVID put a, put a kibosh on half of it, but, uh...
Richard, do you have any comments on timeframe for the comprehensive plan?
Um, well, the board hasn't discussed the timeline on to it, so I, I don't really think it makes any difference, unless the board has a different opinion, and, and I can ask them.
All right. So we'll wait, we'll wait for your answer then.
Yes, sir. It'll be fine. Thank you, sir.
Can I suggest something?
Yes.
We are getting into a much broader scope of things which have been heretofore considered part of the plan. And I'm not saying that's inappropriate. I'm just wondering if we do, we need a new appendix for anticipated future issues or opportunities of, and put them in, in wall in one place, because we're going to have, we're going to have some for every chapter.
How's that sound?
Unanticipated stuff, absolutely. But I, again, the issue I was raising is that I think that some, some basic restructuring of this plan...
My, and I, I'm not going to that, because I agree with you.
Okay.
I just think we can, as we go along, we're going to keep coming up with new things that were unforeseen by the original document. And it would probably be helpful to put them all together in a separate appendix. So in future years, we can see if there's any clarification on some, some of these issues.
Agreed.
Issues, or if they should be highlighted somewhere in the main body of the document.
Yeah, and, and our environment is changing, whether we lack it or not. Yes. It's changing, and we're going to have to adapt or be swallowed up, so, you know.
And I think it's a convenient way to not lose sight of those issues, because they will be important at some point.
At some point.
Whether we're dead or not.
Yeah. Okay. Stuart, anything else?
No, sir.
All right. So a separate appendix will be considered.
But, you know...
Yeah.
It might not work out, you know, stylistically or conceptually.
Yeah, I think the idea is not to overwhelm, let's do it, and, and, and listen to my eyes, that simply because, uh, by the time they get through catching up with all these regulations, it'll be, you know, it's just more than they can handle, so...
And this is a very creative body. We can even come up with all, all sorts of things.
There you go. There you go. Stuart, is there anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move, I adjourn.
I have a second.
I bet you do. Yes, sir.
Okay, we adjourn. Thank you, everybody.